All right, I call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Can we get an establishment of the quorum?
Okay, trustee Hack?
I am here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
Vice President Lathan?
Here.
Great, and then we'll move on to the flag salute. Vice President Lathan, can you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on here is the approval of minutes for the special board of education meeting on June 21st, 2023. I'll entertain a motion unless people have comments or changes.
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion's been properly and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to the next set of minutes for the special board of education meeting on July 18th, 2023. Does anyone have any comments or changes? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. All right, next we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. So these past two days, we welcomed teachers who are new to our district, so it's been a very busy past couple of days. And tomorrow, we welcome all of our certificated staff back for staff development day, really looking forward to that. I wanted to let you know a little bit about our summer programs. We had 19 days of intercession in TK 6th grade at all elementary sites and Park Middle. It provided a nine-hour each of the 19 days. Average attendance per day across the district was 645 students. And in our high schools, we had high school credit recovery with 1,287 students, 34 summer graduates, so you'll get information about their graduation. Some students improved D grades to become A to G eligible, which is part of our A to G grant funds. We had an 8th to 9th grade summer bridge program where we visited San Francisco State, guest speakers to become familiar with the high school programs, and worked on ELA math and CTE classes. We also had a middle school career camp, which was well received for 6th to 8th graders, which included CTE classes and emergency medical careers. And we had UC Davis, I'm going to say this wrong, Yujima CSTEM Middle School and High School students. There were 40 that participated in that program. And then we had adventure swim camp for ages 8 to 13 and junior lifeguard cadets, 24 students per week. And upward bound trio program, it's a college-going initiative. And I just want to give a shout out to our personnel, human resources, I'm sorry. So we hired, for this school year, we have 13 new AMA management personnel. We hired 98 new employees to, as teachers or counselors, which I'm very proud of, and 35 CSEA. Those are custodians, admin assistants, that, so big shout out to them. And that is my report for the evening. Thank you.
Any short follow-ups or questions? No? All right. Next we'll move on to public comments. Do we have any public comment cards?
They're both on 15A, so.
Okay, both on 15A, great. So no public comments under 3A and no public comments under 3B. Under district reports, we have none. Under hearings, we have none. Under public presentations, we have none. And so next we'll move on to consent items. Does anyone, is there any discussion or any items that we need to pull from the consent calendar? Yes, Vice President Lathan?
Thank you. 7E. I'm wondering, there's a description of, there's no scope of work in the agreement, so the description in the agenda says, gives a little bit more information, but I read the contract several times, and it just, it doesn't have the total amount, so I'm just concerned if there's no total amount, then how does the vendor know how much they can go up to?
So that is our continued contract with Lernard and Associates, who's Chris Lernard, that has been working in the district in the maintenance, helping us with finishing up the Kimball roofing project. And he has also been leading the pack and handing it over to Ken for the Deer Valley turf. So it's up to 50,000, and he charges us on an hourly basis.
Yeah, but how does he know what the max is? There's no max on here, it just says $150 an hour.
Well, we contract with him on an hourly basis, so it's not like he has an open-ended contract where he can go up to a certain amount. We ask him to do specific things, and then he bills us for those hours for doing those tasks.
Right, but on the agenda, it says maximum 50,000.
Right.
But on the contract, it doesn't have a maximum. That's what I'm asking. I do, you know.
Oh.
Yeah.
We can re-revise it if you want me to put on the contract 50,000, but this is how he's submitted his contract in the past at his hourly rate. And then we do an open PO, which is a contract, and it's not to exceed, which is what we do with a lot of vendors. So the PO that we will open for his contract will be a specific amount on the jobs, and it's usually up to a certain amount.
Yeah, I understand. It just doesn't have it on the contract, so, yeah, I would be.
So I'm not contracting with him for the 50,000, I'm contracting him at $150 an hour. And then when we do a PO for the specific jobs that we will engage him with, we will put a dollar amount, and it usually says up to, so on the PO report is when it'll show a dollar amount for that specific project.
Okay, I do contracts all the time with districts, and I read contracts here all the time, and it'll have an amount on the contract, right? And what I'm saying is there is no amount, so if he keeps billing, I just don't want us to get in hot water at $75,000, and it's like, well, you didn't tell me I had to stop at 50,000. Does that make sense? And I'm not saying for this, I don't know this person, that's not the point, but you're asking us to approve a contract that doesn't have a limit on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So should we move this as a separate item to vote on, or should we get it, are we able, do we have the leeway and time to be able to amend that in a way that seems more?
Do you have, can you amend it and bring it back for the next meeting? Okay. If that's soil of the board.
Yeah, is that, is everyone okay with that?
Has this been past practice, though, over the years?
Yes.
So nothing's changed from what we've done in the past?
So we're contracting with him at an hourly rate, and the amount is to be determined. We're guessing that's 50,000. And when we do a PO, which is also another obligation, and it allows the vendor to know how much we are, that the PO is open for a specific project. So the contract in the past has not been for a certain amount. It has been open-ended from the contract perspective, and then we do a PO based on the project.
Got it.
So that's the way that he limits it, on how much hours he's spending on a specific project.
Does it, would it impact our operations if we did just bring this back at our next meeting with specified on the contract that it is up to 50,000 at that point? Great, and is that okay with everyone to do that?
Yes.
Great, okay. Any other items to pull or discuss?
We do have some revisions.
Board member?
Yes.
Item 7F is a revised document for the consent agenda. It just added some additional names that we wanted to go ahead and process.
Yeah, that list.
And it's been made available to the public.
Got it. Yeah. So yeah, there's a few items here that we received revisions for, that's for consent item, yeah, 7F.
And then, so do we need to make a motion to bring that back, or no?
For item E? I think we, I think as long as we both, we're all in consent, I think that should be fine.
Okay.
I under, excuse me, Mr. Chair? So we understand that it's not interfering in the process, right? Meaning, time-wise, to get the jobs done?
We can make it work.
Okay, that's just, I understand, okay.
So we're not approving that tonight? Oh, we are approving that tonight. I'm just, I'm.
Yeah, I'm understanding that we, that currently we're looking at not approving item E tonight and bringing it back at our next August 23rd meeting.
That's, that's the genesis of.
Yeah. Any other items on the consent calendar?
7J, I just wanted to commend whoever was over this contract, because it was a great example of timelines, milestones, activities, and desired outcomes. It was very clear, like everything, I'd imagine, as your department, but I'm not sure. So it's for some kind of anti-racist work, so just wanted to commend you for making sure that that was, that's a really good example of a contract that's clear.
Any other items? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion, and specifically, the motion I think we are looking at is to approve all items except for item E and with item F with the revisions as presented.
Aye. I'll make a motion?
All right, Vice President Lathan has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, all right. The motion on the floor is to approve all consent items A through L excluding item E and including item F with revisions as presented today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes as presented. All right, moving on to eight action items, there is none. And then moving on to item nine, items for information discussion, action by board. We have 9A, which is a review of the board governance proposals that we received from our RFQ.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Under the circumstances that Dr. Lewis is not here, there's two items, that one of them is mine, but this issue of our proposals, I think I'd like to have him present, since there's quite, there's four that's really difficult, I mean, not difficult, but has a lot of information that we need to choose. And then the other one would be B. So I'm asking that A, 9A and 9B be held until the next meeting, which is, what, the 23rd?
Yes.
If that's okay.
What are, what is everyone else's thoughts on that?
I would agree that if there's no detriment to the city or to the school board, to wait for a couple of weeks to approve.
I agree. If we, do we need to make a motion?
I'm just asking for information. Is there any negative parts of postponing it?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we just want to pull it?
Yeah, and I think, so I think we can just move that to the next meeting, and I don't think we need a motion.
No.
If there are no negative impacts.
Yes. I have a question.
Yeah. Vice President Lathan?
Can you reach out to the people who submitted the RFAs?
Yes, and let them know that it's extended, definitely.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I'm also, yeah, in agreement that I think, I think it's fine that we postpone these. I think if anyone has any comments on these that are, that are good to share now, I think that would be okay as well. Because I think just a brief comment I have is, I think, you know, when we review this next time, I think I'd like for us to focus on what are the deliverables and the outcomes on these, because they're very different. So just to keep that in mind when we have our full board discussion. If anyone has any other thoughts or things to share, otherwise, I think we are good to move these to our next meeting.
Yeah, I organized each of the RFPs into like pros and cons, and that was very helpful to see, like, what is it that we said we wanted, and then what are kind of some of the positives in each of the RFPs, and then what are some areas that were like, oh, we didn't ask for that, or do we really need it? So, I don't know, that's the process I use, and it seemed to be helpful for my processing.
All right, so unless we have any other comments, we'll go ahead and move on to section 10, resolutions for first reading. So we have a number of resolutions here. I'm wondering if there's anything that we do formally before kind of going through and approving these.
These are ones that have come before the board in the past, and we bring them twice a year now, or three times, just once. Oh, so these are resolutions for the year? You can take them one by one, or as a bundle?
Got it. I think it would.
Yes, first read. Thank you.
Great, so does anyone have any comments or any discussion on any of these resolutions that are presented to us here for first reading?
I read through them, and they're, you know, pretty standard in terms of resolutions. And then I just thought about, you know, the ones especially around like National Latino-Hispanic Heritage Month, Filipino-American History Month, like those, and I thought, I'm so glad we're getting the equity audits, but also, you know, I look forward to hearing when we have these months, and even outside of the months, how we're actually honoring those students, right? Through exceptional education every day, exceptional facilities every day, clean, you know, because otherwise, for a lot of people of color, I can say for, as a black person, it feels performative, right? You have this Black History Month, or you have this month, but then most of the black kids in our districts aren't reading on grade level. So that doesn't feel very authentic or honest, it just feels performative. So I hope we can get to a place where it's not just a resolution in a month, but where we actually start seeing more and more gains in student learning, to say, we care about you, and you know this because of the results we get.
Thank you for sharing that. I agree that it'd be great to find ways to connect these resolutions with specific actions we can do.
No, excuse me, just Chair, normally, like Cesar Chavez, we usually have displays, we have information, and most of the schools have some activity that calls attention to the struggles that the farmworker had.
Yeah, I think, and I think it's really great that we do things like that. And I think with that, you know, how can we take that kind of model and also bring it to some of the other resolutions we have, and make sure that we're putting that effort kind of all throughout these different things that are going on, and that we're finding ways to make sure that we're also touching on these intangible ways, and in terms of student outcomes. So thank you, yeah, for bringing that forward also, because there, I mean, there is work that is being done on these things as well. Great, unless there's any other comments, we'll continue on. 11 resolutions for immediate action, resolution 2023-24-22, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the 2023-24 school year.
Yes, thank you, Board Chair. This resolution provides our instructors, who are already hired by the district, to teach outside of their credential area. Oftentimes, in a situation, usually at a secondary school, we'll have a number of different curriculum areas that an individual may need to teach during that year. And so if they're teaching something that is slightly connected to, or part of their credential, or just something that they have skills in that we otherwise can confirm that they do, we seek this authorization to have them be confirmed and approved to do that curriculum. And so it's a process that, again, through the state of California, we're allowed to do. Through the district, we want to make sure that we have our teachers as best appropriately assigned in their positions as we can. So we're working to ensure that our teachers are appropriately placed, and this gives us the authority to do that.
Great, all right, well, I will entertain a motion to approve this.
I move approval.
All right, it's motioned. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the ayes have it. Moving on to 11B, resolution 2023-24-23, authorizing provisional internship permit.
And again, thank you. This is allowing those individuals who are in particular teacher credentialing programs to provide the service to students, in essence, be employees while they're continuing their education. We work closely with their universities, with their mentor teachers, with the teachers who are overseeing their success, to ensure that they're properly credentialed. This gives us the authority, again, based on report at board action, to approve through the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, that these individuals will hold the internship permit for this school year.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move approval.
Great, the motion has been put forward. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Moving on to 12, resolutions for second reading and action, we have none. Moving to 13, board policies for first reading. We do have three policies here. We have revised board policy bylaw 9220, governing board elections, revised board bylaw 9223, filling vacancies, and revised board bylaw 9240, board development. And I'll turn it over to staff to just do a brief introduction and overview of this.
So the first two are in response to Senate Bill 1061 and Assembly Bill. It's a CSBA model policy. The third is actually our current policy, but it is an increase to each board member's budget to 5,000. At this time, as we're still working on revising the other. So at this time, it's just first read. If you have any thing you'd like to add, feel free to email me, call me, and it'll be before the board again on the 23rd.
I do have a question about 9240, is this the time?
Uh, yeah.
So that's a policy that I revised. Trustee Rocha did a first revision. I took it and I kind of extended it with some metrics. You sent out a survey to the board, and what happened?
Kelly got the results of the survey. I don't believe all board members filled it out, and she's still encouraging them to do so. We can send that out again if you guys, if you would all like.
No, because that's not effective. I'm curious, for those who didn't, are you, do you plan on submitting it, or you don't plan on it?
I think I submitted mine. I think I said, I marked my little paper, because that was what we got, what we received. Did you do yours?
I'm comfortable with what the district decides on.
We can't decide on anything until everyone completes it.
I'm comfortable with what the district decides on.
The district or the board? We're the board.
We're the board. So if you have a majority of the board that goes in one direction, I'm comfortable with that.
But we can't go anywhere until you fill out the form, that's what I'm saying.
If you have a majority of the board, it can go without my vote on it.
Okay, so.
What are the next steps that we need for the board development piece? Is this an item that we maybe need to bring back for discussion as a board?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah.
Great, so, okay, so we'll bring this back then as a discussion for the board, to kind of make sure that we're moving forward on that. Any other comments on these, the just-for-first reading? All right, moving on to 14, board policies for second reading and action, we have none. And 15 information items for general information. We have our early literacy support block grant, annual report from Fremont Elementary School. So we do have some public comments on that, but we'll go ahead and do the intro first and then do the public comments.
So as part of the requirements, Fremont Elementary did receive this early literacy support block grant. This is their second year of, or they just completed their second year of implementation, so that is what this annual report reflects. And in summary, it is focused on literacy TK through three, and the funding went to support not only the utilization of the three staff development days to be used for efforts surrounding literacy, whether it's professional development, or collaborating with their colleagues, looking at data to make some instructional decisions. In addition to, it also funds their reading, two reading teachers that provide small group instruction. And so within that report, they also share data that demonstrates the growth that has been made in those grade levels. And so it's here for your information, as required.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to the public comments for this. So first up, we have Amanda Freitas.
I just wanted to come and just say how amazing that this grant has been for our school. It's really transformed the literacy instruction that we're able to provide our students. Many of us have been able, I've talked many times about the letters training, many of us were able to take that because of the grant. Right now, there's 13 of us left, because a couple left our school, but there's 13 of us currently who have volunteered to do this intensive training. We've used our staff development days for it. We also meet once a month to kind of talk about our learnings, because when I tell you the things you learn in letters you don't learn in your teacher preparation program, I truly mean it, like, it gives the full scope of how students learn to read. We come together, we've been able to talk about different things that we're trying to implement in our classroom, how those things are looking. And I, as was mentioned, it's a TK3 grant, and I just have to give major kudos to our principal, Sylvia, because she has made sure that fourth and fifth grade don't get left behind. So we've also, were able to participate in the training, she, you know, the materials that we tell her that we would like to implement in our classroom, she's able to secure for us. So I just wanted to say what a blessing, I guess, it's been for us, because it's really, especially in the lower grades, where they're really delivering that reading instruction. And I just wanted to invite anybody to come down and check out the awesome things that are happening in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Amber Dagan.
So I wanted to also talk about the grant. I teach first grade at Fremont, and I have been a heavy part of this literacy block grant. One of the things that was really important to me was to make this grant transformative, because as we know, our reading scores are pretty dismal, and that's something that keeps me up at night frequently. And so obviously, what we're doing is not working, and that means we need to look inside ourselves and say, things need to change. So part of that is improving myself, learning how to be a better teacher, relearning how to teach reading, because in my credential program, I was not taught any of this information. So I went out into the world, and I really just didn't know that this is how reading is, this is how it works, and these are the best practices. So I just want to emphasize how really amazing learning this information has been, how much it has completely transformed my classroom, how much it has completely changed the way that I look at reading. I think one of the avenues that I think we should go next in, that I wish we could do with our grant, but unfortunately, we had to spend so much money on our teaching, reading, our reading intervention specialist, who are amazing, and we need them, don't get me wrong. But more, getting more into dyslexia and how that affects our everyday students, because dyslexia is a spectrum as we're learning in letters. And as a classroom teacher, especially in the lower grades, I need to know how to help my students who are in, on the dyslexic spectrum, and need specific evidence-based practices to help them be reading, readers, basically. And so having that information would be really great, and I think that's probably a really amazing direction that we could go in to really transform our schools and help our students grow more. So that's something I just wanted to say. This grant has been fantastic. The letters training has been so transformative, and, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. For, about the program, or?
Just for her.
Sure.
You or Ms. Freitas? What, you said the letters program, I'm not sure what that is. What, you said the letters program, I'm not sure what that is, but either that or what is something that you've learned differently? Because you said, I learned new stuff, and I've, you've implemented it. So what are some new things that you learned, and then also what changes have you seen in your students' decoding and comprehension skills?
So, um, one of the biggest things that I learned was the importance of phonemic awareness. That phonemic awareness is kind of the root of most reading difficulties. And this is especially true for our students that are on the dyslexia spectrum, that most of the time, if there is a reading difficulty, you're going down the list, and the root cause of it is often a phonemic awareness issue. So one of the things that I've been doing in my classroom has been targeted phonemic awareness interventions in my students. So, for example, blends is really hard. So those are things like BL, PL, TR especially because that goes chirr, and it sounds like a CH. So doing targeted phonemic awareness activities with the students. So, for example, change block to brock. And having my students really think about how, what letters do I change, making their attention focused on the blend itself helps them notice that it's there. And then that in turn improves their writing and their reading also. Because a lot of times, if they can't hear that the letter is there, they're not going to read the letter. So that's probably one of the biggest things. That's just an example.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking a question on the spot.
Yeah, 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 it's fine. I'm happy to answer more questions. I'm very, very passionate about this. I really, really want our students to be readers. This is something that's, I've been really, really trying hard to focus on transformative change in our school, and I think this is a really great avenue to make that happen because change needs to happen. We are, we are failing. We are not reaching our students. And the only way that we're going to do this is if we change ourselves and we change the way that we approach this. So one of the things I did differently before in the past, a lot of the things that I did before in the past were guided reading. So you get a book, and it has a repetitive sentence on the bottom, and it'll say things like, "I ate a orange peach." And then the next page would be, "I ate a red strawberry." But the thing is, is because the sentence is repetitive, that student isn't actually reading it. So, for example, that would be a GR, that would be a level C. That would be meant for a kindergarten student who is just learning how to blend a CBC word. There are no words on that page that that student is able to blend with their phonics skills. So the only way that they could possibly read that word is to guess or use the pictures. Are you actually reading a book if you're just looking at the pictures? If you don't even need the words on the page to know what it says, you're not reading it. That's not reading.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it'd be great to, yeah, continue this conversation.
Sorry.
I actually want to apologize because I forgot this was timed. This was public comment time, so that was my bad, sorry. But thank you for sharing.
Any questions for district staff for discussion on this? I just have two quick questions. Do we have any plans to expand this, or what are the barriers for that if we are seeing good successes from it?
Expand what portion? The grant itself, or the grant is a fixed thing?
The things that we're spending the grant money on, such as like this letters training and some of the implementations associated with that, these things that are leading to advanced phonemic awareness.
So we do have reading teachers in our schools, reading intervention teachers. They don't have as many as that they have at Fremont, but we do have them available. And we do have ed services staff that is looking into the letters training.
Yeah, and then I think just the, the comment with that is, you know, because I see, you know, these teachers that keep coming and saying how great this program is, and one of the things that always strikes me is how much energy and how happy they are to talk about the program. And one of the things that we know is a huge issue in education is burnout. And if we can make sure that people are happy about the things they're teaching, that they're excited about the things that they're teaching, and, you know, making sure that we are continuing to foster that kind of happiness and things and expanding it. So whenever, you know, so that's what I'm thinking about when I ask that question, is how do we, you know, do something that's both effective and that is energizing people?
Yes, absolutely.
And I have?
Yes, Vice President Lathan.
Thank you. So thank you for sharing again, the teachers of Fremont, all the work that you all are doing. And kind of going on what you were saying, just kind of extending the conversation in terms of what they shared literally is basic, right? I'm not saying you guys are basic, please don't take that. But phonics awareness, that's literally like TK, you know, kindergarten work. Balanced literacy, like, like this is not anything new in education. But what I'm hearing them say is that we don't have that, and when I'm, and when I'm looking at our scores, I'm seeing we don't have consistency. I know there is one school where, and I don't remember the name of the school, it wasn't Fremont, but it was another elementary school. The principal told me she was a literacy coach before in another district, because I went through all her classrooms. She was so excited. Every classroom had phonics instruction. You could see it very clearly when you walked in, on their charts, everything, right? How do we get to that level? So every school, especially every elementary school, but even some of the older grades, like we have a systems approach to literacy because what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing in our results is that we don't yet. And so, and that's literally like decades of research. This isn't anything mind-blowing in terms of teaching kids how to read, and it's a science, I understand that. So I don't want to minimize the effort that it takes. But I'm just curious what we're doing to systematize it so that it is not just at Fremont and the other school that I visited, but at all our schools, and this is a common practice, and all teachers are trained.
Well, I will add that the, I believe the principal that you're talking about, we hired this summer to work at the district level with all elementary schools.
So all teachers are trained already?
No, no, we just, she just came down. Yeah.
Thank you.
As a literacy coordinator.
And what school was that? I'm sorry.
She was at Turner?
Yeah, I think so. So then how are we getting all teachers trained? And if we don't have an answer today, that's fine, but the question is, how do we systematize?
She's already in her office making plans.
All right.
Unless there's any other comments, we'll move on to item 16, future agenda items from board members. Any future items to share?
Yes, but I don't want to go first again if someone else wants to go.
I just want, a question for me is, were we going to have a bond person come back?
Yes, at the next meeting.
Next meeting? Because I didn't know if I had seen that in the paper that you sent us.
Yes.
Some of the issues that in your Friday board letter sort of addressed, future things?
What if you?
Yeah.
I just want to caution board members too, just a friendly reminder, this is just where you say what it is without saying your opinion of the item.
Yes, Vice President Lathan.
All right, so Board Policy 9240, we're going to bring back. Special Education Audit, these are all the things that should be on there already, but we didn't make a, we didn't bring it back. Workforce Housing, that's what trustee Rocha was talking about. So AB 2995, like how can we piggyback that with bond measure? And lastly, when Kelly, at one point Kelly asked, she would send an email and say, do you want this to be an action item or a discussion? And the last few times that things that I put on the agenda, she didn't ask me that. But some things I want as an action, so if you can ask that question when you send the email so that I can, and all board members can say whether they want it to be an action item or a discussion. Thank you.
All right, if anyone has any other future agenda items, we'll move on to section 17, additional comments which exceeded the first 30-minute session limit, which I don't believe we have any. Great, item 18, reports and comments from board members. And we'll go ahead and start on our right with trustee Hack.
Okay. In December, I suggested to the board that this out and about type of document, going about and recording that and sharing with the board members, I sent my update, I guess, in August. And I haven't seen anybody else, so hopefully you will do that and share what you've seen and what you've done. I know there's a lot of graduation stuff, there's a lot of people on sites, but we don't know that until you share it with us.
And how would you like to get that?
I just do it through the pony.
So send the list? Okay.
All right, Vice President Lathan?
I'm excited about this school year. I'm excited about the equity audits. I told the community that I would host some community events so that people can understand what equity audits are. I know that Superintendent Anello has directed the principals to lead their own at their school sites, which is fantastic. And I will extend my, myself if they want me to come and visit. But otherwise, I'm just really excited about the work that we're going to do this year.
Trustee Rocha?
Well, I just want to call attention, I believe, is because I feel that she's done such a great issue, and that's Janet Frazier. She's honored as the Women of the Year at History at the Capitol, and that was in March. But Steve Glaser had an event, Senator Glaser had an event today. But I wanted to call attention to the fact how she used an issue, her daughter died in an accident. She used that pain that she had, and it is now has reached over 300,000 people by the idea of these packages networked to care. And how does it tie with this? Is that she uses our special ed department, and they pack it. They do all the jobs that are required, and learning those jobs are also open to employment in the, in other big boxes and places that need students to do certain things. And it's just amazing what has happened to one idea and how much it's traveled up and down the state. And what she does, and this is the issue, is that she had an incident where she was trying to take care of her other daughter. One had died, and one is at the hospital intensive care. She sat through the whole time without thinking of eating, right? And she almost fainted, and the doc, the nurse gave her a sandwich, and that was the issue. When she realized what had happened later on, that it was because of this nurse that helped her, she understood that other parents were probably going through the same thing. So then that's how her packages of care became a reality, and she uses purple for her daughter. And she has been doing this, I think, 2005 or so. And she's reached so many families. On top of that, now they even have one going in Colorado, in Denver, because somebody carried it over there. So I just wanted to bring that forward because I thought it is quite an honor to have somebody that has done so much. And she's a quiet person, you wouldn't even have known, but she does once a year crab feed so that she could take care of the funding of this project.
Thank you so much for sharing. And then as far as comments I have, so since our last meeting, me and Vice President Lathan were in New Orleans for a school board member conference called Art Collective Power, and it was just such a great experience to be able to talk with school board members from all over the country that are trying to find ways to do things different from the way that things have always been done. And I think one of the pieces that I think resonates the most with me, and I think resonates with the book I have to share today and kind of the space that we're in right now, we're right about to start the school year, and I think it's a really exciting time. But we forget that we exist in our own worlds, you know, so often for this brief period of time in the summer, and then we are all coming back together from very different lives and trying to form one community together. And so at, at that conference, we had this thing that we did, we called them wisdom circles, where we shared, you know, what's giving you the most struggle right now. And a lot of people shared very deep and powerful and impactful things and tragic and traumatic things that were happening in their life. And one of the things that someone at the table did after I shared some of the things going on in my life was they went up to me and they said, hey, I really appreciate you taking the time to share this. And I think we often value that people are vulnerable, but I think sometimes we forget that extra piece of acknowledging that vulnerability and the impact that it made. Because I think that was the powerful piece that he shared. He's like, you know, when you shared this, now I think about this way when I think of some of our vulnerable students, of some of our biggest challenges when it comes to our students. Because what I shared about is, so my family recently moved within the district area from the apartment that we lived in our entire life to a house just a few blocks down the street. And it's been such a change of space that we kind of are a little bit aware of, because of what happened in the pandemic, of how people, how kids struggle to find space to do their homework and to have, you know, simultaneous Zoom things going on. But just having the space to exist in different areas and make different decisions. For example, our apartment before, we did not have enough space to have a full, like, family kitchen table and ever have family dinner. Like, it's nothing that we've done for the, you know, my entire nearly 30 years growing up, outside of going to, like, restaurants or places outside, and now it's something that we're able to do regularly, and we're able to make better health decisions because we're able to eat at home. Because sometimes the only way to get community was to use, you know, the money and the resources we had to go these other places. So our students are also making decisions like that and having to make decisions like that and navigating spaces. So I shared about that, and he said, I've never thought about how space impacts students. And so as we're heading into this new school year, I think it's really important to acknowledge the different ways that our students exist and the different things that affect their learning, not just outside of the things that kind of come naturally. And so the book that I have to share is The Day You Begin. And this book really starts out with this plot of this girl who is very nervous about talking about what I did over the summer because all of her classmates are saying, oh, I went to Paris, or, oh, we went to the beach. And she spent her summer in this urban neighborhood where it was really hot, and she was reading books, and she was scared about what people would think about her sharing that story. And then in the book, she shares that story, and the book acknowledges the power in sharing that story and how it gives validity to other people who may be feeling that and experiencing that. And it made her feel more powerful and accepted when she was able to share that. So I think, you know, I just kind of want to leave us with that thought when it comes to now all these kids are coming back to this space. And how do we make sure we acknowledge all the different ways that they come to us and meet them where they are? All right, so unless we have any other comments?
I'd like to make one reminder that Saturday, the 20th, is coming up, the Saturday, the 5th, is a school supply event at Dallas Ranch from 10:00 to 2:00. And there'll be some community service agencies there. Besides that, if you've never been to one, it's fantastic to see so many families coming through and getting served.
All right, moving on to 19, future meetings. So our next meeting will be on August 23rd, and the one after that will be September 13th. All right, and lastly, adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
All right, the adjournment has been moved forward. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Vice President Lathan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And the motion is approved, and we are adjourning the meeting.